Welcome everyone to the March 26th meeting of the Richland District Two Board of Trustees. We're happy to be at Condor Elementary School. We'll hear from them soon, so we'll give them time to toot their horns tonight. Glad to be here. This time, we're gonna have an inspirational moment and the Pledge of Allegiance. The inspirational moment is coming from the Book of Proverbs. Would you please stand? We're gonna talk about wisdom. "Happy is the person who finds wisdom and gains understanding; for the profit of wisdom is better than silver, and her wages are better than gold. Wisdom is more precious than rubies; nothing you desire can compare with her. She offers you life in her right hand, and riches and honor in her left. She will guide you down delightful paths; all her ways are satisfying. Wisdom is a tree of life to those who embrace her, happy are those who hold her tightly." Let's say the pledge, please.
I'm going to introduce this to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? This time, we're gonna approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion, Ms. Anderson and Inspector seconded the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote on the motion. Thank you very much. Announce vote. Approval of the... We have a consent agenda. There are several items on there. Is there any... I'm gonna have a motion for that, to approve that agenda. We can have discussion after the motion.
I approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Self. Okay. At this time, there's time for discussion. I have a few questions to say. Okay, go ahead. Tom, is Tom or whoever's gonna do the technology report? I saw where we're doing a technology of our... I'm sorry, I lost my mind. It was for adult education. We're doing some computer testing out there. Was it GD? Okay. My tongue got tight. Okay. What does that mean? I mean, is it a... It says, is other people come in and take that outside of the district? Is it a center or is it just for our people?
Yes, it is. It's online, as Tom said, and it's for our community as well as adult ed students who go there. It will be aligned to the common core, and so we're delighted that we have that opportunity to be able to offer it online.
Thank you. That was my question. Any other questions?
My question was for Ms. Carter. All of those design add-ons for school 19... Those add-on, design add-ons for 19, was that lost in the cracks? Where did that come from? How did we end up with so many? Because that was an unusual amount of design changes that I've seen in quite a while. Did anybody else notice that?
I just pulled it up also, Ms. Anderson. You asked a question before you asked it. I was looking at the same thing.
So, when we go in executive session, will you be able to stay here? Because I wanna hear some of their response to that. Oh, they have not responded yet. Thank you, that's where I was going. I appreciate it. You're a step ahead of me.
But when you get that for money, you always ask for a penalty with that money, right?
You ask for the difference between good day and bad day.
That was very unusual, to have that many. Okay, thank you. I just, I look forward to hearing the response to that.
Other questions? Mr. Chair, on the ratification of personnel, I'm gonna recuse myself from the one that involves the teachers.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion for consent agenda. Let's vote on that item right now.
Can I want to pull out this?
Hold on, we got a question.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson requested on page...
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three of the ratification, that item number two be pulled out. Is that okay with the board? Vote on everything but that one.
Yeah, we just passed it, so everybody knows what it is.
By the way, this is the time we... All the teachers' contracts are being renewed. We got a stack of renewals this thick, so that's why we're going through this hard. Make sure everybody's informed. Any questions? Any other questions? Okay. For Jack?
Mr. Garrett, did you need to see what I was pulling?
No, I haven't.
You have, okay.
Thank you very much. We're past seven zero. Our next item is item six, Special Recognitions. Dr. Breschew?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to call on Ken Blackstone, our Executive Director for Communications and Strategic Partnerships.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Breschew and staff. Tonight, we have several groups and individuals to recognize, and as I call folks forward, I would like to tell you about, a little bit about each one of our honorees. First to be recognized is a group of students from Ridgeview High School who produced and submitted the winning video, Dr. Martin Style, for the Principal's Month Video Contest. The contest was sponsored by the National Association of Secondary School Principals, and if this, I think there's some students that are gonna come up as well, right? This is set to the popular tune of Gangnam Style. The video showed off the school and principal, Dr. Marty Martin. The names of the students are listed on our PowerPoint slide, and if any of those students are here as well, if you could come up and join us. Are they... I see. That was my next question, okay. So, thank you very much, Dr. Martin. The Ridgeview Student Council recently received the National Gold Council of Excellence Award from the National Association of Student Councils, and at the Association State Conference, the group received the Gold Council of Excellent Awards. There's actually two awards. The Gold Council of Excellence Award, and this is the group here. The Association State, at the Association State Conference, the group received the Gold Council of Excellence Award. The aforementioned video, Dr. Martin Style, won Best Video Project, and they received the Best School Spirit for Athletics Project entitled, "You Better Redneck-Agnize." And so, the student body president, Brittany Green, student body vice president, Tiffany Bryant, and student athletic activities director, Lisa Ellis, and principal, Dr. Marty Martin. So, congratulations to you all again. Our other high school student councils also received honors at the conference. Blythewood High School received the Gold Honor Council Award, and coming up to be recognized are student body president, Hunter Durham, student body vice president, Bryn Wyatt, junior class vice president, Destiny Nelson, junior class secretary, Alexandra Herrera, sophomore class president, Paige Durham, student activities director, Fletcher Spigner, and principal Keith Price. And next to receive the Gold Honor Council Award was the student council from Richland Northeast High School, and here to be recognized is student body vice president, Sudesna Boral, sophomore class president, China Blackman, student activities director, Roger Mize, and Spring Valley High School Student Council also earned the Gold Honor Council Award. Here to be recognized is the student body president, Aubrey Kane, student body vice president, Laurel Noel, student body historian, Courtney Ackerson, student body secretary, Kerthana Neer, student body president-elect, Richard Harrison, and student activities director, Alyssa Ashford, and principal, Dr. Baron Davis. Our last student council to be recognized is from Westwood High School, so that makes it a clean sweep of our five schools. They too received the Gold Honor Council Award. The Red Hawks also came away with the Outstanding Projects in Leadership and School Service Awards, the Silver Gavel Award, and second place for the best student council among AAA schools in South Carolina. Here to be recognized is student body president, Jasmine Farmer, student body vice president, Taekwon Williams, junior class president, Whitney Johnson, council members, Evany English, King Anderson, and Taisha Hawkins, student activities director, Janet Frick, and principal, Ralph Schmidt. One more, we gotta get one more picture here.
Get a picture with you guys. Y'all move back so I can get a chat, picture with my baby. All of my children from Westwood High.
One very special one.
Well, get up there so you can get your...
This is fine.
No, that looks retarded.
You wanna come forward?
This is fine, I just...
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, while you're doing awards, the award that I won, the drawing I won at the conference, we found out at the Teacher of the Year banquet the other night, it was a hundred and fifty dollar certificate to any school of my choice, so I donated it to Westwood, and Ralph is donating it to student government.
Congratulations again. Our next special recognition will be Keel's Elementary School, who was named the overall winning school in the Reading with the Gamecocks Literacy Outreach Program. One hundred twenty-three students read a whopping three hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five pages to win. Coming forward to be recognized is fourth grader Christopher Brown, who was named the overall highest hero for reading the most of any student in the state in any grade level. The highest third grade reader, Troy Evans, read a staggering seven thousand six hundred and thirty-six pages, and their principal, Alvera Butler, is here as well, and who am I missing, Alvera? Thank you so much. Our high school DECA students prepare for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management, and students from two of our high schools received first-place awards at the recent DECA Conference held in North Charleston. From Blythewood High School, Lorenzo Dykes won Principals of Finance, and Jamie Kiefer received first in the advertising campaign category. And joining Lorenzo up front are Suzie Neal, the school's DECA co-advisor, and principal We once again turn to Ridgeview students who received first-place awards in hospitality. Christina Green in Hospitality and Tourism Professional Selling, Alexander Voight and Justin Sherry in the H&R Block Dollars and Cents Challenges Number One and Two, Jamie Hewin for the H&R Block Challenge Two, Jamal Harkness, Malik Ball, and Jude Atkinson in the Virtual Sports Challenge, and joining the students up front, Pat Jackson, the school's faculty advisor for the group, and of course, Dr. Marty Martin Style. Encore performance.
Y'all have the tuxedo on.
All this neat. Marty, you guys need to come over a little bit.
Marty, y'all feeling the gap to get us out.
She's got the idea.
Thank you all. The Dent Middle School Math Counts team once again pulled in the state victory for the fifth straight year. Individually, the team had five students placed in the top nine. Students traveling to the national competition in May are Venita Chipperpally, Brennan Raven, Jennings Chen, and Albert Quang. They are joined by their coach and teacher, Kathy Stenson, who will coach the South Carolina team at Nationals, also joining is principal, Dr. Randall Gair. Next up is Spring Valley High School student Anthony Frederick, who I understand is not here, but his principal will come up, Dr. Baron Davis, to accept the award. Anthony was honored for his exemplary volunteer service with the President's Volunteer Service Award. Board members may remember Anthony from last year, when he was recognized for outstanding efforts winning the Prudential Spirit of Community Award. So, congratulations again to Anthony. Don't go anywhere, Baron. Let's see. Student artists at two of our high schools were recently honored for their photographic skills. Spring Valley High School senior Colton Raven received the Scholastic Gold Medal Award, and Colton's not here, so Dr. Davis, if you'd please accept on his behalf, we appreciate Also, Westwood High students Jasmine Stewart and Givante Spencer received the Scholastic Silver Medal Awards. All three students are taught by photography teacher, Bill Hicks, and let's see, Ralph Schmidt, are you coming up as well to receive the honor? We'll go ahead with the photo. This is the Silver Medal Award for the Scholastic Corporation Art and Writing Awards.
Is anybody else out there? We didn't give them those out already. Sorry. Yeah, I'm just taking a picture.
And we'll sort it out.
Just hold them up.
And we just have a couple more. We'd like to recognize next our special needs bus drivers, Stephanie Haynes and Peggy Peak for placing fourth in the National Special Needs Team Safety Rodeo.
All right.
The contest is sponsored by the National Association for Pupil Transportation and allows school bus drivers to show their knowledge and skills with a written test and an obstacle course. Just as a point of reference, the special needs bus transportation hub has thirty-six bus routes throughout the day that cover more than forty-five hundred miles. And joining the drivers up front are transportation supervisor, Wayne Norton, supervisor for special needs, Brian Mahelski, and safety and training officer, Dennis Jones. Did I miss anybody? We have them all. In our final recognition tonight, Harry Perone Stadium was honored with the Pioneer Athletics 2012 Fields of Excellence Award. The award reflects the hard work of the field crew composed of Stanley Ford, Larry Medlin, Milton Herbert, and Billy Potoski. It recognizes hard-working individuals, schools, and communities for their dedication and effort in keeping fields and sports facilities looking their best. And joining the crew up front is also our executive director of operations, Jack Carter? Congratulations to all the students and staff that were recognized tonight, along with
Usually we have a mass exodus, so I was just waiting after this, but this time, I'd like to go to item seven, which is student learning. Dr. Breschew?
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. At this time, I'll call on our chief academic officer, Sue Mallett, to introduce our student learning report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Breschew. We're delighted to have with us tonight representatives from Project Care, which is a grant that was provided to our district three years ago, and Dr. Shirley Vickery is coming forward to introduce the folks who are involved and share a brief description. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us present tonight. I want you to first enjoy this video introduction to Project Care.
Project Care is a federally funded grant project that works with some monies from the elementary and secondary school guidance program in Washington, and we're providing four extra school counselors in selected sites around Richland Two. We also have, in addition to those four counselors, we have one person who's a bilingual mental health professional, and she works in selected schools, and another, a seven, a six staff member who is a social worker in a couple of other schools.
Project Care began in Richland Two in 2010 with the goals of reducing discipline issues in our schools and to offer more support to our English as a second language families and our military families.
The project was written really to reduce discipline concerns, and that with the belief that increasing school counseling services would be one way of addressing the needs of some of those students who get into discipline concerns.
This project was structured with community involvement in mind. The team effort includes a council made up of community members, parents, university staff, the Richland County Sheriff's Department, Fort Jackson, mental health professionals, and district staff.
The majority of people are involved in the school system, and I am in the community. I'm a psychologist, and I've worked with children, and so my role is more as an outside perspective. Do I have anything to contribute?
Project Care is a program that helps with the discipline, helps keep these kids on the right track, and any kind of program like that, we wanna be part of, so we're honored to be part of this program.
We all are able to come together, principals from other schools, community members, we have the sheriff's department, I mean, just, there is so many people that want a piece of Project Care, that need a piece of Project Care, so that we can continue to care.
Project Care uses a multitude of strategies to serve the students and their families, including small group counseling, family counseling, and the Building Bridges Initiative.
One of the things for counselors' role is that they're part of jobs to do a lot of small groups for students, for instance, maybe students who are grieving the loss of a parent, or loss of a grandparent, or students who have parents in the military and they're overseas, also students who are just struggling with like how to make friends or how to socialize.
Condor has such a diverse population of working and non-working parents, military families, English, non-English speaking families, and it has been a challenge to be able to meet and work with those parents. Because the care counselor has flexible work hours, she has been able to meet the parents after traditional school hours, and that has been tremendous.
Through the use of a bilingual counselor, this project has offered support to our growing Hispanic community.
This is a lifeline for a lot of families, and that language makes all the difference in the world. Yeah, it's very important, because sometimes, as parents, we have problems with our children, but because of the language barrier, we don't want to enroll. So, with that being out of the way, the door is open.
The partnership between Fort Jackson and Richland Two has always been important. Through Project Care, the district is able to offer expanded services to our military families that deal with issues that most families don't have to face.
Well, because our military population is highly transitional, I believe that the Project Care grant is beneficial to our families. Reason is because our students move in and out all of the time, and they need that extra resource in order to make them feel comfortable, so that their transitions are seamless. So, we feel that this Project Care grant is quite beneficial to these students, as well as others, but more specifically with our military-connected students. We believe that this program is beneficial.
The program focuses on the identification of issues and the intervention to solve these issues at an early age, to help students develop the skills needed to be successful throughout their education and adult life.
It bridges that gap, because what happens is you have a party that doesn't have the same view as the person that's inside the classroom, and then the view of the kid or the student. So, now you got a person that's neutral versus those other two entities. What then happens? You start to bring that together, you start saying, okay, what do we need to do differently? How do we need to interact or interject? What do we need to put in place? Then you bring the parents in, so now everybody's working together. Now you have a community within the school system, when a lot of times, that's what's missing.
The Project Care program is a grant-funded program, but when the grant ends, the need for these services will remain. The families, staff, and community members involved in this program strive to continue to offer the services and help to our Richland Two students and families.
At the end of the day, there are kids that's even in the schools themselves that would benefit just by having it there, so if it's not there, we've got some problems. I can see that.
Very important, he thinks, that the district continues offering these services, so that we can continue to help our children, and as parents, we can cooperate with what's offered.
Project Care, in my eyes, is not just like a grant. Project Care, and I know the other care councils often have heard me say this, is a movement. This is a movement. This is something people need to catch on and keep going, because if you take away the multifamily portion, well, the good that it did those families, you're not offering that to anyone else. Project Care is a necessity.
As we mentioned in the video, the... As we mentioned in the video, one of the goals was to reduce discipline concerns, and I just have to say that in the schools where we've been working, we've reduced discipline referrals by a half. So we have seen really good results and also have increased the number of students participating in both individual and small group counseling. So I just have to take a minute, if I may, to introduce the folks that you saw, some of them on the video, and these are the counselors who work in Project Care and their school principals. First is our school counselor, Tichay Shingler-Ardis from Forest Lake Elementary. And her principal, Dr. Cappy Steck. Our school counselor, Jonathan Jamison, who works here at Condor. And his principal, Dr. Shirley Watson. And I just have to say that as you walk out, Jonathan has a special CARE bulletin board. Jonathan, is it that way? Yeah, he says, "Take a look at what he's got on his CARE bulletin board." School counselor Will Pickens of Windsor, who's actually out of town with the fifth graders in Washington DC from Windsor, is represented by his school principal, Eric Jeffco, tonight. And our school counselor, Tamara Nichols, from the Center for Accelerated Preparation and DENT, is with her lead teacher, Teresa Counts Davis, and principal, Dr. Randall Gary. Our next person is a social worker, Naya Pollard, who works at Catawba Trail Elementary and Mueller Road Middle Schools, and she's with principal, assistant principal, I think, Stacy Gadson, and principal Lori Marrero. And Denise is actually in the audience, but Stacy's taking the honors. And since our last person is very different in role from the rest of the folks who work with us, is Dr. Sandra Hamlin, and she's our bilingual mental health professional. She works in all the project schools and spreads herself around, so she doesn't have a principal with her tonight. All of these are her principals. I'm going to let Dr. Hamlin say a few words about what she's done with the bilingual mental health needs of our district and let the rest of the CARE folks sit down. Dr. Hamlin?
Buenas noches. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Soy la doctora Sandra Hamlin. My name is Sandra Hamlin, y trabajo con el Project Care. I work with Project Care. Es un placer hablar con ustedes esta noche. It's a pleasure for me to talk with you tonight about the work that I've done with Project Care. We believe that a picture tells a thousand, is worth a thousand words. So as I started working with the families, I am trained as a school psychologist, and so I came in knowing all about schools, speaking Spanish, and met families who needed to get help. The children spoke English, but when they needed counseling, they couldn't find anybody who would speak their language. Issues that came, fear, immigration issues, deporting, is the father here, all kinds of stresses. And if that's going on, the children bring that to school. Next slide, please. Grief over family left behind. You have a dream, you want more for your family, but there's grandma who left behind. I stayed when I was a baby, and now I'm in fifth grade, and that's my mom. You need some time, you need to talk to somebody about some of those issues and how it affects you. Next slide. The families bring a strength. They talk about no larse por vencido. You just don't give up, no matter what the problems are, you stick with it, and you make it through, and that is conveyed to the children. They have the gratitude for being helped. They have a willingness, again, to persevere. Strong family commitment. Had a family to come in one time for services with 10 family members. Well, we scattered and got room for them. Next slide. Intervention services. Beautiful room, one-way mirror. Next slide. Books were very helpful. I didn't have any, I hadn't been doing counseling all along. Next slide. But here they are. Many books that talked about issues that are stressful to children, and it's about a bear, or it's about some other animal. And you can identify with it, and you can talk to somebody about it, and you can talk to the person that sat in the room with your mother and father, and you know it's okay to tell the family secret, and when you do that, you feel better. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Social skills. We spend a lot of time learning about sharing, following directions, managing behavior, and we do that through song. Please listen and just try your best. We have rhythm sticks. You end the lesson, and the children are still singing. Please listen and just try your best. After kindergarten, I met a young man in first grade. He recognized me in the hallway at Windsor, and he said, "Dr. Hamlin, I'm doing my best." That's all the data I needed. Next slide. Children with the instruments. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. The Building Bridges curriculum. You know that we use that for people that go to Blaiswood Academy or in trouble with Mrs. Chisholm, and we know that. What we're doing with the Latino population, we translated some of that, and we added issues that we know were germane to their situation. The second session is my journey to South Carolina. I remember asking some young people, "Well, did you come in an airplane?" And both girls started crying. Well, they didn't. And when they tell their story about how they got here, the children sometimes never heard it. There is not a dry eye in the room. What people will do so that their children will get ahead. Common themes affecting youth. Acculturation. You know, a young lady, one of the videos we use, is telling her grandma, "Yo voy al mal, hung out con mis homies." And grandma says, "I don't know anybody named Miss Homies." Well, child looks at her like, "Come on, grandma, you just don't get it." Next slide. DENT Middle School has hosted the Spanish Building Bridges program, and I thank Dr. Gary every time I see him because they're not necessarily DENT students. They come from Summit Parkway, they come from all over the district, and he's never once said, "Those are not our kids, you can't use our school." If we need projectors, whatever we need, it is there. No territorial stuff going on. Thank you again, Dr. Gary. That's the book that the families get. That's a family, yes, the libreta familiar, the equivalent in English. That's a family telling their story. On the left is the flag, looks like Honduras, the US, an arrow, you see, South Carolina? However they want to tell their story. There it is. Next slide. We talk sometimes about the perfect parent or the perfect child, and one of these says that when you go shopping, the parents give you money to shop, and you don't embarrass your kids in public. And you know, we laugh because the parents, on the other hand, say, "Don't embarrass me in public." We have this conversation going on both ways. Next slide. All of this in Spanish. Another family telling their story about their journey to South Carolina. Look at the detail. That mother cared enough to tell her story in a special way, and her children are very proud, helping her to do it. Next slide. This is what she's gotten out of the program, and you can't see it, but it says down there, "I'm going to miss you all." Six weeks before this, we didn't know each other, and after having shared common issues and common problems and finding out that, you know, raising children is kind of hard, we're all going through it, it's okay. Next slide. Mother's still telling her story. That young man over there is quite handsome and proud. Next slide. Again, in Spanish. Next slide. Graduation, we've got a certificate after the six weeks. If you've done at least five of the sessions, you get to graduate. A mother with her three boys, feeling a lot less stressed now than she did when we started the program. Next slide. One of the things we do is a community service component, and what we've done is we've said, you know, there's something about Spanish food that people like. We all like, you know, burritos, or... So our families make food. We've gone to the Ronald McDonald House and taken a meal for parents who were there with sick children, and we've made a connection with the family shelter, which is a shelter for homeless children. Our children go there, and they say, "Ooh, we may not live in a nice place, but we have a place to live." And they say, "There are babies here, and it's a homeless shelter." The last time we went, the lady on the left is Ms. Garcia, who works here at Condor, and she decided that she was going to teach how to make quesadillas. Well, we didn't buy tamales. You see the flour, you see the oil, and those are middle school boys in the kitchen. Next slide. They have forgotten that they're macho and don't cook. Next slide. This one's really taking over. He's patting, and he's getting his tortilla ready. Next slide. Somebody's got a rolling pin. Next slide. There's some food already ready. The families have eaten some, and they came back for more. Boys were so proud, next meeting, they ate our food, and they wanted more. Next slide. The parents working on some of the crafts that we brought. Next slide. A little sister who came on the part... Just one thing about the Latino families, you may have five families in the group, but you may have 20 people in the room, because everybody's bringing everybody, and it makes for a wonderful, wonderful group. Next slide. This is a group of boys that I've worked with since I started on this project, love them to death. One of them was not there for a time, and I didn't know what to do about his absence. And so we just put, we have a behavior chart that we use and give points for behavior, and by his name, we just put, "We miss you." Well, he came back about a month later. Next slide. And saw that his name had not been taken off the list that he was there. Wanted to share also part of the excitement that I bring to this story. I am also an immigrant. I came to this country when I was 14 years old, having been born in Limon, Costa Rica. And when I asked the children about coming in an airplane, because that's how I got here, finished high school, spoke English and Spanish, finished high school in Boston, went to Barnard College in New York City, graduated from Rutgers University, became a naturalized citizen. My daughter, who's almost 22, was born in Charleston, South Carolina, and I did not give birth to her. And I share this story because sometimes we think about the immigrant population, and we think about the families taking. Well, when you give, sometimes the families grow up and they give back. This country has been good to me. I love working with these families because I understand that what they're trying to do is make a better world for their children. I thank you, the School Board of Richland 2. I thank you, anybody who believes enough that all children, even those who were not from here in the beginning, deserve our support. Thank you for supporting Project Care. And I just want to thank one more group of folks. We've had an advisory council with community members, school staff members, lots of folks from around this area working with us, and a good number of them are here to watch us present tonight, so I want all those people to stand. Some of them are standing already in the back. Thank you, guys, for being here. And thank you for your time. Is anybody having questions?
Questions? Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, Dr. Hamlin, where are you? Thank you, thank you so much for what you do for the population that sometimes can go unnoticed and unaddressed, for taking such a personal care and interest in them because they are a vital part of our community, and you're helping to make a difference. I wanted to personally thank you for that. Thank you so much. Is there anything else?
Yes, there is one, one more item we'd like to introduce. Dr. Shirley Watson, principal of Condor Elementary.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Condor Elementary Arts Integrated Magnet School, where we ignite, inquire, and inspire minds through and with the arts. At Condor, we believe the arts encourage creativity and build student self-esteem while also promoting student engagement and achievement. Thus, the arts, along with technology, are the heart, are at the heart of everything we do to enhance and enrich our academic programs. Tonight, our students and teachers, we share with you how we infuse the arts and technology across grade levels. To start the program, our fifth graders will be making a presentation from Birmingham, Alabama, on a Google Hangout and video. For five years now, our fifth graders have had the opportunity to walk the road of freedom during the civil rights era, and tonight, they will share a glimpse of their experience. After the fifth graders present, Ms. Nelson and her string students will present, then a few early childhood students will share their experiences. Thank you for being here, and I hope you enjoy our program.
Turn me around, turn me around, turn me around. Turn me around, gonna keep on walking, keep on talking, marching in a freedom land.
Courage, mental or moral strength, to venture, persevere, and withstand danger, fear, and Courage, you cannot know where you are going until you know where you have been.
Turn me around, turn me around, turn me around. Turn me around, gonna keep on walking, keep on talking.
This is the Google Hangout, and they should be able to answer any questions that you have for them at this time. Hello, boys and girls. Okay. Anyone has a question you would like to ask?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Inspector has a question.
Hi, guys. What will you tell... What will you tell your family and friends about the Birmingham Phil Study when you return back home to Columbia?
One of the main things that I would like to tell my mother and family about this Birmingham trip will be going to the museum and being able to go to Kelly Ingram Park to learn so much about our history and to actually see what it was like.
I would tell them that it was the 50th anniversary of the children.
I would, I would tell my family that we had this awesome experience going to Kelly Ingram Park, doing the march was actually really awesome to us because we get to learn so much about our history, and like in the video it said, you don't know your future until you know your past. So pretty much, it's actually interesting to know your past, to know your then, to know your future.
Great answer.
A great answer.
Another question.
Hi, guys, I'm Mrs. Anderson. How has the trip helped you understand more about the civil rights movement?
I, I think it's better because we get to experience it and not just read about it.
Great answer. Anyone else want to give a shot at it?
Well, this, this helped me learn more because we went to 16th Street Baptist Church, and I really learned so much about the church and the bombing and the death of the four girls. It's, well, five, five little girls were in the bathroom, only one survived. It's been an awesome experience so far.
Great answer.
Any other question? Ms. Brill has a question.
I think it's better now because we can be equal and not separate.
That's a good answer.
Excellent.
I have a question. What has this Phil Study experience helped you realize about equality?
What has this Phil Study experience helped you realize about equality?
I think because we get to be equal and now we got to go to school together and do all the things together.
I think it helped us because like now we know why we have like the opportunities we have now because if those people wouldn't have had those sacrifices, like some people wouldn't have good jobs and maybe like we'd never have killed and stuff.
Good answer.
I, I think it helped us because if we didn't like, if we didn't have the rights we had today and if those people that didn't sacrifice their lives just by standing up and standing outside like the courthouse and stuff like that and marching and they were just standing there and they did nothing and they were getting beat up and stuff, they took a really good sacrifice just so we, as people, could be together with colored people, white people, any type of mixture, so, yeah.
Really good answer.
Any others, other board members, any questions? I want to congratulate you on your learning experience because what I'm seeing is that the reason this is important to you is that you will remember what you've learned, I think, better through this experience than maybe than you would if I was telling you this in a classroom. You probably wouldn't remember it quite as well. And I, and I think this is a great way to learn. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Y'all, y'all have a great trip.
Thank you, guys. I think we have a few other items here.
Good evening. And welcome to Conder Elementary. My name is Jenny Nelson and I am the strings teacher here at Conder Elementary. Usually I try to, whenever I'm speaking about a group of students, to do it more off the cuff in a conversational kind of way. But I wanted to make sure that I shared some important details about tonight's performance, so I would like to read my comments to you this evening. Prior to working here, I completed a master's degree at Louisiana State University and I lived, uh, lived in Louisiana and taught there for six years. During my years in Louisiana, I had the opportunity to taste new foods, learn new types of music, play new instruments, celebrate different holidays and festivities, and to understand the deep and rich history of the Cajun people. Like many living outside of the state of Louisiana, I had several misconceptions about what the term Cajun meant. I thought simply that it referred to people who ate deliciously spicy food and had a unique accent when they spoke. What I didn't realize is that the Cajun people have a history that includes years of exile and mistreatment. The term Cajun is actually an accepted mispronunciation of the word Acadian. Acadian refers to a group of descendants of seventeenth-century French colonists who settled in Canada. These people, during the sixteen hundreds, lived peacefully in the area of Canada known today as Nova Scotia and Quebec. In seventeen-ten, the British took over this area for approximately forty-five years until the French and Indian War. With French and British forces fighting to rule this area of Canada, the Acadians tried to remain neutral. However, their neutrality did not do them any favors. Between the years of seventeen-fifty-five and seventeen-sixty-three, the Acadians were exiled from their homes and deported from their land. This event in history is known as the Great Expulsion. Nearly twelve thousand Acadians were exiled and deported during these years and over a third of them perished from starvation, drowning, and disease. Families were separated and removed from their homes and forced to relocate. Many Acadians eventually settled in southeastern Louisiana. Many of them remain there today and fight to keep their dialects, music, and other customs preserved. Acadian cultural preservation has been challenged over the years and although organizations like Codephil have been formed to try to preserve it, some question whether or not the dialects, customs, music, and other cultural aspects of Cajun history will survive the next generation. As I immersed myself in Louisiana culture, I was captured by the strength and resilience of the Cajun people and felt compelled to help in efforts to preserve the culture I was beginning to love so much. While in Louisiana, I became heavily involved in the preservation of Cajun culture, specifically the music. I made a conscious decision before leaving Louisiana that wherever I went, I would find ways to incorporate my love for the state and all that I came to treasure there. I am grateful that the administration, students, and parents here at Conder have celebrated this culture with me and have taken great interest in our class. Beginning in late January of this year, students auditioned to be part of the Louisiana Music Project at Conder Elementary. Eighteen students were accepted into this class and have been learning about all aspects of Louisiana since that point. The class meets once weekly for ninety minutes after school on Tuesdays. Over the course of the past few months, students have had hands-on experience with a variety of different instruments, including the Cajun accordion, tiffé, which is a triangle, guitar, and electric violin. Students have also had the opportunity to learn in-depth about the Great Expulsion and other pinnacle moments in Acadian history, as well as to study the visual art, folktales, and customs of Louisiana. Students had the opportunity to participate in a Mardi Gras celebration in which they made traditional Mardi Gras costumes and ate traditional Louisiana foods. In upcoming classes, students will be able to Skype with Louisiana musicians to perfect their work on traditional Louisiana music. The presentation that you will see this evening is meant to show you a window into a few of the things that we have had an opportunity to experience in the Louisiana Music Project. While our fifth-grade students could not be here in person tonight, the students that you will see are third and fourth-grade participants in this class. The presentation will begin with a tableau performed by students representing characters they developed in their minds. These characters are experiencing the horrible Great Expulsion. Students use famous paintings to draw for, for inspiration. One of the paintings that was their favorite that they drew inspiration for their tableau tonight is on the projector here. We will then present to you a traditional Cajun waltz, J'ai Passé devant ta porte, which translates to "I tra, I passed in front of your door last night." The song tells the story of a young couple in love. The young man finds himself passing by the home where his love resides, only to see religious candles burning in the window, signifying that death has occurred and a funeral will be held. He realizes that the candles are for his love. The two, two students will recite the translated text and a group of students will perform the song on fiddle and tiffé. We hope that you enjoy our presentation this evening. I thank you for allowing me to share something very meaningful to me and something that I hope has grown meaningful to the students as well.
I am an eleven-year-old girl that has been separated from her family. I am very sick and really sad.
I am in a ten-year-old boy who does not have all his family members right now. I am tired and hungry and I've been walking for miles.
I am a parent who's been separated from their child. It's hard working in the fields and I feel that I have been treated unfairly.
I am a dog and I'm hungry and thirsty and I'm now wondering why my family left me.
We now present to you the, the lyrics of the song J'ai Passé. "I passed in front of your door last night. I cried goodbye to my sweetheart. No one answered me. Oh, it hurts, my heart hurts."
I looked closely, I saw religious candles were lit. Something told me I would cry. Oh, it hurts, my heart hurts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good night. Um, for the past month, second grade has been studying cultural contributions from different immigrant groups. Tonight, we're going to share some of that new learning with you guys.
I learned about Jackie Chan. He was born in April seventh nineteen fif, nineteen fifty-four in Hong Kong. He, he is important because he is a famous actor, choreographer, comedian, producer, martial artist, and stunt performer. You will see him in movies like The Rush Hour and Karate Kid.
Rosa Parks was born February fourth nineteen thirteen in Tuskegee. Rosa Parks was raised in Pine Level. Rosa Parks died on October twenty-sixth, two thousand five.
Coretta Scott King wrote a story about her life with Martin Luther King Jr. And she had four kids and, four kids, she had two sons and two daughters.
Martin Luther King, he made a speech about civil rights. Martin was always thinking about his hard speech. Martin's brothers always liked to do their own words. Martin was born in Atlanta, Georgia.
Guten Tag, my name is Kyami. I've studied German immigrants. I've researched their arts, traditions, and foods. Many famous musicians were born in Germany like Mozart, Beethoven, and Bach. Poker is another type of art, it's a dance. There are plenty of German traditions that they've brought to America, like the Oktoberfest. Germans love to eat, they brought gummy bears, sausages, and pretzels. Did you know that lunch is the most important meal in Germany?
Chinese immigrants enjoy folding origami and playing dragon games. They even like to paint art, different arts in China. They have markets and they, they have peanuts, egg rolls, rice, and chicken to eat.
Sports and games came from all over the world. Soccer came from England, they made it the most popular. Ping pong came from England i, in the eighteen-eighties. Basketball came from Springfield, Massachusetts on March eleventh, eighteen ninety-two.
Did you know that Chinese people call their home the Middle Kingdom? Some Chinese people live in city buildings. They share their bathrooms and kitchen. There is a giant panda and Chinese tiger that lives in China. That is what I learned about China.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mrs. James. I am a twenty-two-year veteran teacher here at Conder Elementary School. Through the arts, our kindergarten students have been learning about the seasons and the weather. My student, uh, Jamaya Warden is going to recite a poem that depicts the season, spring.
My name is Jamaya Waden. My name is Jamaya Waden and this poem is "The Colors of My Dream." Every night I dream about a violet garden. I dream about red cheeky children. I dream about the big blue sky. I dream about the white clouds up high. I dream about indigo flowers and the green grass. I dream about violet rivers and streams stretching out vast. I dream about listening to pink and purple birds hum. I dream about yellow and orange big bright sun. I wish that when I wake up, I see a world just like that. I, I wish to wake up to a world that is worth looking at.
Gracias por venir. Gracias por venir a nuestra escuela. Estamos muy contentos que hayan venido. Los pedimos que vuelvan pronto. Thank you for visiting our school. We're so happy you came. We hope you, you come back soon.
Mr. Chair, I think he needs to come back and let it get caught on the ch, uh, camera with his bow. Did you get him on the camera? You missed his little bow, it was really neat for his age. Oh, you got it up there? That was too cute.
That's great. Is that all?
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Been trying to leave since you got here. No, Ms. Spencer, we'll have our ti, first time of public participation at this time. And we just ask that you keep your comments around three minutes to the board. Uh, keep them courteous, professional. And we ask that you state your name, uh, you can state your address or the neighborhood you live in, um, and if you're with a group or something like that. Just state that also. At this time, I have two that have signed up. David Ruddick, would you go forward?
Ladies and gentlemen of the School Board and assembled members of the community, I'm here tonight as a representative of a project that is near and dear to many of us. Thirty-five years ago, at, on the campus at Spring Valley High School, what used to be Richland County School District Two Stadium was renamed Harry Peron Stadium in honor of a gentleman who at the time served as the athletic director of both high schools. Jump ahead thirty-five years, we have another gentleman who has dedicated his life to serving the community and the children of this district, Mr. W. Craig Dunzing, the one and only choral director at Richland Northeast High School. I represent a group of a hundred and seventy-five individuals who actually are part of a community that at this point spreads from the Atlantic to the Pacific and from north to south. Their mission, they would like to see either the chorus room, the fine arts building, or the auditorium on the campus at Richland Northeast High School renamed in this man's honor. We understand that they're We understand that there is a policy in place, a policy FF, which prevents the naming of new buildings or new facilities for an individual who is either living or has not been deceased for a period of 10 years. We are asking that this policy be revisited in this case for a number of reasons. First and foremost, Mr. Dunzing's 35 years of service to the students of this district. But more important than that, the very wording of the policy, which stipulates that no new facilities can be named for a living individual. The buildings that we are seeking to have renamed, or the room that we are seeking to have renamed, opened 35 years ago at the same time that Mr. Dunzing came to Richland County School District 2 and Richland Northeast. We are planning a celebration in honor of his 35 years of service to the students of Richland Northeast at the Spring Choir Concert on May 20th and are hoping to have this action completed by that point. More details are forthcoming, and you can consider this to be an unofficial invitation. A more official invitation will be forthcoming. But I would ask all of you to consider granting this exception in this particular instance, given Mr. Dunzing's years of service to the youth of our, uh, community, his years of service to the campus, the Cavalier family, as Dr. John Hudgens so eloquently called us all those years ago. And do him the honor, while he is still alive and around to enjoy it, of renaming one of these facilities in his name. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd. The other person who signed up, and I believe it's Katie Smalley. Is that correct? I got it. Okay, thank you.
I just, my name is Katie Smalley. My kids are Joseph Kills. If it wasn't for, I just wanted to, deep down in my heart, say thank you for putting two extra pre-K schools in the class. If it wasn't for that, my daughter would have been in school. So, I'm on the school improvement council meeting, so. It's a blessing being on it. There's one in particular thing that I wanted to see in Richland 2 before my kids get out of school as a civil air patrol in one of these schools. I work with one at the old Kenan High School. And it would be, I think would be great to have it here incorporated in the school system. I was luckily to have Chief Langston, Major Ward, and Sergeant Beam as my RGC instructors. And I work really hard. The kids give me the most upper respect. If someone has a problem, they will come to me. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for adding those two extra classes in the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smalley. Any other, uh, any different subject or anything other subject that someone would like to address the board about? Or policy? Got one more chance. Okay. Okay, next, our next item is item nine, which is voting on executive session items. At this time, we did not go, have time to go over those items, so we will have a second executive session. And we will probably not come back. I just want to tell my camera, our camera crews, because it's just student, it's basically just for students. We're not voting on anything, spending money, or anything like that, okay? So, we're not going to come back and make you wait, because that may be a lengthy, uh, time, too. But we will be voting, but we'll open it up to the public. But again, those are just student issues, and there is no monetary or things we need to vote on at that time. Okay? So, just want to let you, give you the heads up. So, our next item is our new business, no action requested, proposed. We are going, this is no action requested, but we're proposing to sell general obligation bonds. Dr. Broschew, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. Davis, our chief financial officer, will introduce this item.
Thank you, Dr. Broschew. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, we, as you recall, we're well underway in our building program authorized by the 2008 referendum for $306 million. Uh, we're currently building Elementary 19. Elementary 20 is in the wings, as is the Richland 2 Learning Center. We're asking the board to authorize the resolution you have in your packet, authorizing us to make the last installation of the bond sale, which will close out the funding of the '08 referendum. This will be for $55,140,000. With us tonight is our bond counsel from the Air Firm, Ms. Franny Heizer. She and I and my staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Franny, come up. You've been here a long time, and I'm going to make you stand up anyway and be recognized. Are there any questions I have? Any questions for? You've worked on a lot of bond referendums. Is this one of the longest, uh, longest ones you've ever worked on to actually sell, to get the bond sold?
Well, actually, y'all have, uh, you had a great plan going in, and you've let that plan unfold. So, um, I think it's typical of how y'all have done business over these years. And I know y'all have had a long meeting, but if I could just take a couple of minutes, I was thinking on the way over here that this could be my last meeting and probably will be my last bond issue with Mr. Davis as your finance director. And I've just got to say, I know y'all know it, but I just want to say that what an excellent job he has done for y'all for all these many, many years. And it's certainly been a pleasure for me. Y'all, um, y'all could not have been in better hands for all these years, and I'm confident that nobody will ever replace Mr. Davis. But we certainly look forward to working with your next, um, your next finance director. And anything we can do to help in that transition, we'd certainly be delighted to. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, um, y'all might have about, about this resolution or the upcoming bond issue.
Any questions?
Chairman. Franny, how are the rates right now? Because I know y'all talked about they might be going up.
Rates continue to, um, to be very favorable. Um, you know, y'all's debt is relatively short-term. Y'all have made a commitment to pay your referendum debt back in approximately 15 years. And, um, I think interest rates fluctuate a little bit, but by that I mean that, you know, they might be from, you know, 3.4% to 3.5%. So, I don't know exactly what this interest rate will be, but I'm confident that it will be as low as any of the others that y'all have received. You also, um, as part of your financing plans, and y'all have made a commitment to your millage limitation, and we've never, ever had a problem meeting that commitment, and I'm sure that we won't have that problem, um, this time either.
Other questions? Thank you, Franny.
Thank you all very much, and it's always good to be with y'all. Let me know if I can do anything, and, um, look forward to a great bond sale. Thank you all.
Thanks for your.
Item 10-2 is proposed waiver policy, uh, DFA investments. Uh, I'm going to continue with you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, as, as the board is well aware, interest yields, as Ms. Heizer just mentioned, are at historic record lows. Uh, it's been frustrating. The government investment pool where we tie up our short-term investments is yielding 0.25% of 1% in interest, 25 basis points. That has been extremely frustrating from a yield standpoint, try to earn some money on our interest investments. In talking with our bankers, First Citizens, and with us tonight, we have the senior vice president from First Citizens, Barry Myers. And Barry, come on up if you would. Barry and David Anderson, the president of First Citizens, have put together what I think is a very interesting proposal for the board's consideration. We're just presenting this as information tonight. If the board is comfortable, we will come back at your next meeting and ask you to vote, because that will require a waiver from our current policy. Our current policy DFA, uh, limits our maturities, that we can tie up investments for 24 months. A very prudent policy in light of volatile interest rates. Again, interest rates are at historic lows. The proposal that Mr. Myers and Mr. Anderson have put together for us, and there's one sheet, Joe, Mr. Burke, if we could go ahead and roll that. The highlights of it, it would require us to tie up $5 million for five years. Again, you see, the First Citizens' bank yield, though, is 0.67%, which, again, is not a ton of money, but it's more than twice what we can get out of the government investment pool, what I can get out of any other insured savings plan. So, it's a net yield of 0.42%, $21,000 a year. Five years, $105,000 that we could have as interest income with this. We currently have a fund balance of about $30 million. I don't see a major downside with tying up $5 million for five years. There is a downside. If interest rates during the next five years somehow dramatically spiked upwards and we were forced to sell these, then we could incur a loss. Mr. Myers, am I leaving anything out on that?
Not leaving anything out.
All right. Uh, I think the likelihood of that is very slim. I certainly think that for the next 36 to 48 months. And so, again, uh, I want to thank Mr. Myers and David Anderson and First Citizens for bringing me this proposal. It's the best I've seen in the market at large, and I thought they were pretty resourceful in coming up with this. And for the public's benefit, these bonds would be tied up in FDIC insured issues and in AAA government bonds. So, the principal as secure as we could ever have. So, again, I think.
You thought this was as secure as they are now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. How about the bike? How good a shape is it in?
Uh, it's.
I bike with you, so I want to know. I just really want to make sure before we do this.
Very strong, very safe, very secure. Accepted no-tarp money, and we're actually on the FDIC shortlist to acquire banks that do come in trouble.
Well, and, uh, okay, board, this is for discussion, so I'm going to open it up.
Good question, sir. What happens in a, this is a hypothetical situation. If we have some type of catastrophe and we need to tap into the $5 million? We're going to lose our, what, what?
The, the value of the CDs that are FDIC insured, or the federal agency bonds we purchase, will fluctuate with interest rates. If you were to have to sell some or all of those bonds, and at that time, there were unrealized losses associated with them, then we actually make that a realized loss when you sell it. But we are laddering this portfolio, so we're not having all the money locked up for five years. We'll have money that's maturing over time. But you are right, there is interest rate sensitivity associated.
So, the money that matures over time, we could tap into that?
You sure can.
And not bother the actual $5 million?
Good question. Any others?
Mr. Chair, is this a one-time waiver, or are we actually amending the policy long term?
Yes, sir. I, uh, my proposal is for a one-time waiver for the policy for this one investment. Again, I think the policy limiting it to 24-month maturities is basically a very sound and wise policy. So, we'd be proposing a one-time waiver for this one investment.
Thank you. And First Citizen, right now, is yielding the best out of all the local banks, the 0.67%?
Nobody's touching that, Mrs. Anderson.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess there's some questions for Mr. Davis. Removing $5 million, leaving us with $20,000, puts us in what categorical range, percentage-wise, of our cash reserve balance?
Uh, Mr. Jackson, it, it doesn't. It doesn't alter it as far as the rating agencies looking at our fund balance. It does go from restricted or from unrestricted fund balance to restricted fund balance. So, it would be categorized with that on our financial reporting. Thank you. Any questions? Any others? Well, we thank you for being here with us.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Well, this is for information, and we're going, this is a waiver, a one-time waiver. And I, I hope we'll be able to vote on this next time. Okay, thank you, sir. Report, um, this is item 10-3, report for the budget design team. Dr. Broschew, I'll let you start this.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Fleming. We have a number of members of our staff that have been about, uh, a budget design team, and they have, um, been able to receive quite a bit of information through a survey that was conducted some months back. And at this time, I'm going to call on, um, I think we'll start with Jeff Potts and Shelley Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I've had the unique pleasure of facilitating the district's budget design team along with Penny DeNini, the manager of budgets and special revenue, and Jeff Potts, Director of Assessment and Accountability. For several years, the district has sent out online budget surveys to seek input from the employees of the district to come up with the focus and priority areas for us to consider in our budget process. Communication was sent out in December to employees to seek this input. Um, and in January, the information and responses were compiled. Jeff Potts worked very hard in January. We, we did a lot of corresponding to get all the data compiled. There were 851 responses this year from employees. Um, in February, the budget committees, we actually had five budget committees. They were each made of 12 to 15 employees throughout the district. A variety of employees were involved in each of the committees. We had teachers, psychologists from high school, elementary, middle, academics, you name it. We, we had a very diverse group in each of the, of the budget teams. These teams met throughout February and basically went through the responses to find some common denominators, some trends within those responses, and present a consolidated report for each of those five committees to the overall district budget design team. In March, the reports from those five committees were submitted to the design team, and the district design team was basically made up of two members from each of the five committees. They were appointed by their individual committees to represent those teams. So, in March, we have actually met together, the design team. And at this time, I'd like for any of the design team members that are present to please stand up and be recognized. These folks worked very hard, had several meetings. It is a very agonizing process to go through all of this, um, large amount of data and try and come up with, with common denominators and sum it up in something very concise, which they are about to present to you in just a few minutes. Thank you all very much for your, for your time and dedication. Um, unless you have any specific questions about the process or the survey itself, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over. Any questions at this point, or we can, we can ask those at the end as well. Jonathan McCullough, who is a psychologist at Blythewood High School, and Lynn Schrader, Assistant Principal at Bethel-Hambury, are going to walk through the presentation from the budget design team.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Broschew, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of the budget design team. I also wanted to thank you for allowing the staff of Richland 2 to have a voice in this process. It was very difficult to discern recommendations from the comments that we gathered. But we have them listed in a PowerPoint slide. Maybe you have that on your iPads.
We do.
That being said, the top priority, uh, the overwhelming number of responses that were gleaned from the survey indicated a desire to increase the number of helping professionals in the district. Survey respondents called for more school counselors, more psychologists, more social workers, more nurses, more academic interventionists, more behavioral interventions, more intervention counselors, such as those through Dr. Cooper-Haver's program, and more mental health counselors. Uh, staff indicated an awareness that our students come to class with life challenges that can create barriers to learning. And some of these barriers are learning difficulties, behavior problems, poor mental and physical health, socioeconomic, family problems. All of these things can significantly impede a student's success in school. And they called for more helping professionals who are specifically trained to handle the increasingly complex needs of our students. Uh, the staff also indicated a need to increase administrative support at the elementary and high school levels, specifically having two assistant principals at each elementary school and assistant administrators at the high school level without teaching duties. Secondary priority included our career. Secondary priority included our career and technical education programs. Survey respondents indicated a desire to expand the breadth and depth of our programs to meet the needs of all of our students. Comments called for more programs and classes to help those students who prefer immediate employment after high school rather than higher education. Staff indicated a need to ensure equal access to all of the CATE programs in the district, not just those that are located in your home school. And staff indicated that there should be better communication about what programs we offer and which schools that they are located in. And I think the volume of these responses about our career and technical education programs validates the thinking about the importance of the service and also the district efforts towards building the new student career center and expanding our CATE programming. Thank you, Ms. Schrader.
Thank you. To continue with our next slide, the committee said, "We really appreciate the fact that the board clearly recognizes the need for a strong educational foundation for every child. Over the past several years, the board has taken the initiative to add five child development classes in order to better meet the needs, which brings our current services to 33 classes located in 17 different areas throughout the district. Much needed additional support, however, has not kept pace with this growth. Therefore, the following recommendations have been made. A permanent facility for child development. The evidence for this need can be seen by looking at current locations, many of which are housed in portable buildings. And also the expansion of an additional support for child development based on the need for more personnel and services to support these classes, such as curriculum effectiveness specialists, teaching assistants, and an ITS." The next area is media funds. "The transition to common core standards with its increased emphasis on rigorous literacy instruction highlights the next recommendation regarding media center funds. This support is essential in meeting the diverse academic needs of our students whose reading and critical thinking skills are constantly changing. The shift to common core will increase the need for nonfiction, informational text materials, as well as current and not yet envisioned technologies to allow equitable access for all students. A key trend that was drawn from the survey concludes that the Internet, while useful and a necessary resource, still does not replace the need for books, particularly at the elementary level." The next area of concern was with professional learning. And here we said, "The board has consistently shown very forward-thinking in its support for continued professional development for the members of the Richland, uh, I'm sorry, Richland School District 2 learning community, and we ask that they continue to do this. The recommendations of the committee are based on many responses which focused on the use of those professional learning funds and the need to diversify the opportunities that were available. To better meet the needs of our staff, it is recommended that an emphasis move more to common core and content, core content areas, as well as technology integration into the classroom. It's further recommended that consideration be given to the use of stipends, vouchers, and tuition assistance as funding methods to further support what is considered an essential part of our ability to provide the highest quality instruction possible for the students of Richland School District 2." The last point is technology integration, and here, Richland 2 is clearly a leader in the area of technology integration, and this would not be possible without the continued support of our board members. "We greatly appreciate that the board recognizes the path that is set before our students and the critical role the technology plays on this journey. As evidenced by survey results, it is widely agreed that Richland School District 2 excels in the area of technology use for the students in our learning. In the same light, respondents also consistently identified areas of improvement as we move forward. To better meet every, the, sorry, every changing technology that we see, the needs of our students and staff, the following recommendations were given. First of all, the need for additional technical support personnel in order to allow building-level instructional technology specialists to better support the actual integration of this technology into the classrooms. And also, the need to increase the contract days of those building-level instructional technology specialists in order to better balance operational tasks, training needs, as well as technology integration into the classroom." And I'm gonna turn it back over to Ms. Allen for a moment.
One of the final things that the design team wanted to bring to light was, through this process, it was, it was very interesting. There were, there were clear indications that, that we are, while we're doing a great job with so many things, that we need to continue to work at communicating all the opportunities that we do have out there to our community and our staff. And time continued to come up as a theme during a lot of the comments as we reviewed that. I would also like to add that it, it was very enduring going through this process, getting to work with some wonderful professionals, and observing them really focus on maintaining the integrity of this process and focusing on what our employees were truly trying to communicate that and try and filter that down into some information that administration and the board could use in going forward in this budget process. So I would like to, again, thank them for their professionalism and, and all their time and dedication. Also, I would like to add that there were several comments made during the process by members of the, of the team that were very positive, that they wanted to go back to their schools and, and tell the folks there, "They are listening to what you're saying, you do have a voice. Your comments, every comment was read by multiple people in this district." So I would just like to mention that because I thought that was a very interesting comment made during our process. And at this time, we'd be glad to open it up for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Y'all did a very good job presenting your material tonight. Questions?
Mr. Chair, when, when they say more time is the key, explain exactly what's meant by that.
I think it was a common theme when you, when you look at a lot of the comments, like professional development, for example, there were numerous comments about professional development. Very few of them really had to do with money requests as far as increasing the budget or decreasing. They were more needing the time to actually spend to, to take that information and digest it. Time as far as instructional technology specialist, that was another common concept that came up. Working with technology integration, we have great technology. There were tons of comments throughout the survey process that, that reiterated we have committed to hardware and, and having one-to-one technology, but we need more time with like IT specialist or integration specialist to work with our teachers in integrating that technology into the classroom. So that was kind of why time kept coming out, because in multiple things, as all of us in everyday, you know, life, we, we need more time, if we have more time, we could do more. So it was just a common thing that we continued to, to see, and if anyone else wants to add anything? Yeah, time to collaborate, that was another, um, after you've gone through this professional development and having that time. So it was a common thing that's, that's sometimes hard to tie to a budget figure or how you would manage that, but, but it was definitely inundated throughout the comments.
I'm very supportive of the AA's going back to focus on AA work. I was unhappy when we made the cuts, sometimes vocal about the fact that they need to be focused on that and putting more assistant principals, vice principals back in some of the schools. One of the things I don't see on here that I'm interested in is foreign language for our students, and is that something that came up in your work?
There were, there were comments that, that tied in with foreign language, as there were with lots of other topics. Truly, the task of this committee was more to pull together the common trends that we saw, you know, throughout, and, and these were areas that truly, in every group, they brought and, and pulled into the big design team. So there were mention of, of foreign language. It just was not necessarily overarching thing throughout the, the responses.
Thank you.
Mr. Grill?
I want to thank you all for an excellent report, outstanding. And I was interested to see about funding media centers because that was part of my budget request also. So I'm with you, and I'm with you on a lot of what you all said. Thank you, very professional and very well done. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, do you have a question?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Chairman, just a thought, I'll guess a question. I noticed there were about 350, 360 fewer respondents this time than in the past. Any comment, any thought you have on that, why that many fewer people decided to participate?
That's an excellent question. Jeff and I had several conversations about that, just, you know, I'm a finance person, he's data. We're analyzing, what, why did this happen? And, and Jeff brought up a great point. If you look back at the responses we've had in the past two years and what those recommendations generated, if you go back and look at the presentations from the past two years, a lot of the things that were on there really did make it through to what you guys approved as a budget. Social workers are a perfect example of that. Professional development for support, staff-
Early childhood classrooms.
Early childhood classrooms. I mean, there were a number of things that we noted on there that were actually implemented. So we truly feel like that's made a big impact on the actual comments that people made because they are seeing things happening that they've requested. So we think that has a lot to do with it. And also, anytime, you know, you look back two or three years, anytime you're going through budget issues and people might like get furloughed or have any, any, any negative impact on them directly, you're gonna get a lot more feedback and comments. I mean, when things are going, you know, more smoothly, it's, it's gonna go down some. So those were some of the things that we came up with as we thought about that.
Mr. Chairman, also, I'd like to say too that the comments that were received are running fairly consistent with the feedback we got from the climate survey as well. And when you look at the data from those persons who responded to that, which is significantly more people, but generally speaking, their observations and, and concerns and recommendations were falling in line almost perfectly. I would like, Mr. Chairman, to see that maybe we would be able to get sort of the recommendations lifted from the report and present it to the superintendent and the CFO so that they can look at them and then sort of present back to the board what they would recommend we do and look at in a very serious way because you sort of have to lift from the document in different places the recommended recommendations. And I think some of them are, are doable right away, others may take, take a longer period of time, so that would be helpful. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No, they, it was a very good report, and I, everyone knows that I'm pushing for social workers and counselors, so.
Yeah, I think we got the nurses, we probably need a couple more.
But at this point, for the intervention program, we really do need counselors and social workers, so I was glad to see that part in there. It was a very good report.
Ms. Patrick? Um, I wanna, you, you didn't say this, but you surely indicated this in, in the technology aspect of, of what we do here in District 2. You, you've hit, and I'm, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but what I've seen, there was a little bit of indication we've jumped ahead of ourselves, maybe? If, by your lip, I see. I mean, and I, I don't want us to do that, okay? So I want to know, I mean, this may not be budgetary, but it is a concern because we're spending money on it. And I never want to ever feel like we've done that. My other question is helping professionals. Have you thought about helping non-professionals? Some other aspects that can work in a school that aren't professional, that can actually help do what we want to do too? I mean, a combination. I, I, I've just gone around, I've just known people in other districts, large districts throughout the Southeast, and they are using non-professionals to do some, take the load off. So we need to think along those lines.
Know how specialists-
No, 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 I'm talking about from ages to security people to help, helping run, you know, helping principals run schools. I'm talking about everything. But anyway, I'm just, just throwing things out. I don't know if that came up or not, so it may not have, but it's something I, I have thought about. Okay, that's all my questions. I appreciate your, I appreciate your- All right. Next, Mr. Davis. This is your night.
Yes, sir. Some of the staff and I talked about that a couple of times this week.
This is your night.
On the revenue forecast for next year. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, by the way, let me personally add my thanks to Ms. Allen, Mr. Neny, the, the folks on the team. That was very, very good work. And, and thank you, and Jeff Potts. Jeff's the hero that made this all possible, so Jeff, thanks to you. I have told Ms. Allen and my staff that if I ever had a crystal ball, I threw it away years ago, and I did so for a reason. With that caveat, let me try to give you a revenue forecast for next year. Mr. Burke, if you'll help me out. Ladies and gentlemen, on this screen for the benefit of the audience is the Education Finance Act formula. The board is well familiar with this, the cornerstone of education funding from the state of South Carolina. Essentially, two out of every $3 that comes to us from the state comes through the EFA. The key number up there is the $2,101 base student cost, which the House of Representatives has included in their appropriation bill. The House and Senate are on furlough this week and next week. When they come back, the Senate will begin its deliberations. If history holds true to the form, the number would at least go up. The Senate is generally more generous than the House, and one reason for that is they get a later revenue forecast, and they generally have more room to maneuver. But again, we think $2,101 is a minimum, basically, at this point in time. And you see the total number there. And, Mr. Burke, if we could, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the calculation of our local millage. And as you saw in your packets, you actually have three calculations. A zero millage increase, a six-mill increase, and a 12-mill increase. And let me show you one, one number on that. If you look in there in that second block, you see the estimated value of one mill, non-owner occupied. Remember, that's the funding that funds our local revenue for operations, not debt service, but local operations. In the packet we sent you on Thursday, the best number we had was $267,800. At 10 o'clock this morning, that number changed. And how did it change? Believe it or not, we actually got a document from the county auditor's office with a projection for next year. I actually have a document I can point to. The number has changed. The number has gone up to $275,580. So these calculations you have are illustrative of what the revenue would be, but they are not precise. And when we come back to you at your meeting on April 9th with a proposed budget, it will be based on a valuable mill at $275,580. So there is some additional funding that will be available. And I can give you the precise numbers if you like, but let me go ahead and, as a matter of fact, Mr. Burke, let's go ahead and go to the revenue slide. Again, we had the zero, a six-mill, and a 12-mill. And for the benefit of the audience, why, zero, six, and 12, Act 388 imposes a cap on the amount of millage a local governing body can increase taxes. And under Act 388's formula, the maximum millage increase allowed for Richland 2 is 12 mills. So what we've shown you is revenue with a no-mill increase, revenue with a six-mill increase, and revenue with a 12-mill increase. And again, what we will do is we will craft the budget that we will bring back to you at your next meeting, and it will be, you know, Dr. Brochu and the executive staff will work together, will craft the budget, and it will be somewhere between a zero-mill increase and a 12-mill increase as to what all we recommend for the board to consider funding. But the 12-mill increase is a, is a limit. As you look at this chart, and again, it's an eye test for the audience, let me just tell you that the current year's budget is $214 million. If we go with a zero-mill increase, it still goes- If we go with a zero-mill increase, it still goes up some. And the reason it goes up some is the additional funding from the state and some growth in the value of a mill in general, even if you don't increase the millage. And as I look at it, a no-mill increase would be basically $221 million. And a six-mill increase would be $223 million. And a 12-mill increase would be $224.8 million. And those are revised numbers from the numbers you have in your packet. But again, that reflects the increased value of a mill.
Could you go over that again, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. For a no-mill increase, it's $221.5 million. For a six-mill increase, it's $223 million, point, $223.1 million. And for a 12-mill increase, it's $224.7 million. And Dr. Fleming, I have the exact numbers.
That's fine.
Ballpark.
So, that's the revised millage.
That's the revised millage numbers based on. Again, our challenge here, you heard the district design teams. They have presented a number of things that clearly we need to look at. Are there competing demands? The answer is yes. Okay? The executive staff and Dr. Broshue will be struggling. Basically, this week, with spring break looming, the next week, try to put together. The plan is to bring you three budgets.
Bring three distinct budgets.
Three distinct budgets. A zero-millage increase budget, somewhere between zero and 12, and we'll probably come in with a 12-mill increase budget as well. The max we'd be allowed to fund under state law. Dr. Broshue, is there anything I'm leaving out or else I need to say?
That's it, ma'am.
Funding, ladies and gentlemen, be happy to answer any questions and we ask for your good wishes.
You've got a tough job.
We have a challenge. We do so.
Other, some comments or questions, Mr. Davis?
Ms. Chairman, I know one of the things that Mr. Manning talked about last year and we had it on agenda and took it off. And I certainly told him then and I'd say again publicly now that I fully support it and that is reinvestigating the whole notion of foreign languages, particularly at the elementary level. And after hearing from Dr. Hamlin tonight and just the beautiful presentation made by her, I certainly hope that at some point that that will be factored in and those numbers will be brought forward with the budgets that are being presented to determine where, if that were to happen, where, how it could be done and what it would really cost us. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Other comments?
Ms. Chairman, I'm not sure if this is appropriate time to ask, but since Mr. Davis is leaving and I don't know if this would come under him or not, but shouldn't we go back and try for total autonomy since Senator Kozay was the one that was holding us up? And he's no longer Senator. Is that something we need to look at pursuing total autonomy?
I've stated that in the past. Yes, ma'am. But we have to, this year is, I tell you, one of the biggest problems, I think, is the way we've have our chairman elected on a yearly basis.
Exactly.
I mean, this really, we've got, I don't know, I mean, this is, I mean, in the middle of the year, school year. And Mr. Johnson, whoever has been chairman, Ms. Anderson, you get on here and get to issues that you have to immediately do. Then instead of working on it from September to when they come back into session in January, it's always, because you need a person to charge it.
So, is it something that we as a board perhaps may discuss changing policy? It doesn't necessarily have to be a one-year term. We could move it to two-year terms.
No, that's fine. I understand that. But that's why it's hard to get for us to get going on that.
Right. Well, we just have to take the time and do it. Because now is the time, I think, that we need to go ahead and apply for total autonomy before you get another Senator in there that's against it. So, right now, I think is a time for us to go for it and perhaps we may get it. Because I just don't understand why we have to continuously have county council set our budget for us or have to approve everything.
I think the best, I think you're right. I think we need to start this summer.
We need to start on it, make a plan and move forward if it requires us keeping offices and positions longer, whatever the case may be. You know, we need to do it.
Change the way you.
Change the way we're doing it. But just do it. And so, I'm going to challenge us to get started on that.
Good idea. I think it's appropriate to start.
Ms. Chairman, I might suggest along that tone, Mr. Jackson, you know, led our, led the front for the survey. And even though he's not our chair, he's continued in that role. I don't see a reason why this type of thing couldn't start with one person and maintain with that person to leave, regardless of who the chair is.
I think so. And I think, I think the board has approved and be sure we know what we want to do and how we want to do it. You're right, we could put somebody in charge of that.
Absolutely.
We have to make that step and I think this summer.
I agree with that. I was just saying that might be a way we can go beyond.
Why do we have to wait until summer?
Well, I mean, there's no sense in starting now. You're not going to get any response at this late date in legislature. It should go up in June.
Oh, I'm thinking county council.
No, no, county has nothing to do with it.
County has nothing.
State legislature.
I just said Senator Kozay and then, yeah, but you're right. They close in June.
Any other questions?
But we can have it ready so when they open that, aren't they open up again? They're coming back.
Well, they're coming back, but they're, they're, they're working on the budget. They're working on getting all these last minute bills.
You're right, you're right, you're right. So, let's.
Politics have been a lot of good by now.
So, Chip, are you willing to take on that?
No, no, Chip's not willing to take on that. The board, he's waiting for the board.
Oh, I thought we said, I just thought I heard you nominated down there to take on.
No, no. He's thanking me for continuing the climate survey effort.
And he was saying that we didn't have to.
Ms. Anderson, I was using that as a model. Not saying that Mr. Jackson should take every.
I know what you were saying.
Though, Ms. Anderson, since you brought it up, you might be the great candidate to lead the charge and follow.
Chip does such a great job on it. I just wanted you to lead the way and I got your back on it.
Thank you. Good discussion and I think something we will have to approach sometime soon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Without any further questions, we're going to go to old business and wax requests. And we're going to fly through this first because this is just information. I had, Sheriff, we had this put on because we wanted you to get this information. We still have to get the response back from the alternative school, right?
Right, that's just coming in and I think Jeff was just able to start working on that today or yesterday. We will have the results of that at your next board meeting on April the 9th. And we will also have for your consideration a proposed dress code policy for you to review and give input and your opinions.
Any other questions? We can go through that. You can read the other policies that the district surrounded us and from across the country. And it is interesting to do that.
Sure.
Eleven, eleven-two, report business services organization update. Dr. Broshue?
Yes, Mr. Davis has a brief update that he's going to share with you.
Thank you, Dr. Broshue. Ladies and gentlemen, in your packet, you have the update from the report. It was actually given to you March of last year. And in it, the board is well aware that our philosophy in Richland II has always been continual improvement. And whether the suggestions came from Sacks, Casey, or Danstead, or whether it came from an outside consultant or internal reviews or evaluations, Dr. Hands folks have brought up, the idea is to always try to be better and that's what we've done. I think as you look at these, the status report, you see a lot of things have been taken care of. You see a number of things that we in fact disagree with. You see a number of facts that we are still working on. I think the crux of it, though, was that finance should look at reorganizing itself in order to render a higher level of service. And toward that end, we brought to the board, actually in January of last year, a proposed reorganization that the board gave its blessings to in March of last year. We have executed that plan. That, the crux of it was to bring on two junior accountants. I'm pleased, report, and let me thank Mr. Garrick and his staff for their help. We have two winners onboard, ladies and gentlemen. They are both onboard. We are working with them. It's going, I think, very well. I've been very pleased with it and I think we're making some real progress. And we're doing some things that quite honestly before we didn't have the staff to do. And I thank the board for your support and the opportunity to do it. And again, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very proud of what we've done and how we've done it, perhaps more importantly. This board has provided the courage and the leadership to do a lot of things. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. This update report, is there questions at this time?
Ms. Chair, instead of my name that wrote, talk about where we are on the efficiency study and how we got here. Bob, thank you for preempting my questions on that. I would like to discuss two in particular. On 410, they talked about reorganizing the warehouse operations to eliminate the supply function. And you mentioned that there was a reorg done and we're in good shape on that as far as where we are. Can you just give me kind of a brief background on what the advantage of one versus the other and why we wouldn't do that?
Mr. Manning, we in fact have looked at a number of options. And a lot of these were done way back before. But one of the things we looked at one time was shutting down the warehouse, getting out of the business, relying on just-in-time delivery. And we also had, years ago, we had far too many items in stock and when we looked at the stock rotation, it wasn't moving. It was dry stock on the shelves. So, basically, we whittled that inventory down to stock that is turning. So, we've got it down to far fewer items that we have there. But we did find the need to continue to have an in-house capability to deliver some high-volume turnover items. And I really should look back to Mr. Carter and ask Jack, Jack, chime in here if any comments you think appropriate. We feel that we've got a good balance with that organization as it's under present.
Basically, all we stock in the warehouse now is like bulk items. Like, we can buy pallets of paper cheaper than a school could go to Staples and buy paper for their printers. So, basically, that's all we keep in there anymore. It's just very high-volume items that move very quickly and that we can get a better price by buying it in bulk. And there's really only two people in the warehouse anyway.
Do we work with other school districts to buy large bulk paper and things that are pretty common?
We do have some informal agreements, Mr. Manning. There are no formal documents, but our procurement specialist, Ms. Lomas, does meet with her colleagues and they do look at the bulk buying. And perhaps more food side, on the food service side, there is a formal group purchasing.
Well, Sodexo purchases everything, so.
Through them.
And so, thank you. My next question goes down to 419.
Yes, sir.
The armored car service, I just want to make sure that our staff is safe is my main concern.
Mr. Manning, that was, that's what prompted us to look at this. And again, we'd looked at this well back. The proposals to provide armored car services are quite literally cost prohibitive when you talk about 39 schools and centers and daily pickups, et cetera. And we had proposals in from three different armored car services. We looked at a number of options on it and it is. We do suggest to our staffs that, first of all, we try to, one, vary the time of day when deposits are made, vary the people who are making deposits so you don't have set patterns that someone could lock in on. When we have major cash, let's take a high school football game on a Friday night. We'll have the school resource officer follow the person who's making that deposit to the bank that night when they go to put it in the night depository. So, we think we've taken every reasonable step we can take toward that regard. And, Mr. Manning, it is a concern.
Just want to make sure we continue to look at staff safety and ways that we can approve if we need to get the sheriff's department to help us out or other entities, as long as we're continuing to review that.
Amen, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to piggyback on something. Since we already pay secure, the sheriff's department to help monitor those games, why couldn't one officer remain with that person that's depositing the money? Are our officers, oh, they do, okay, I missed that. You didn't say that. Because I was wondering, I don't think our officers are actually have guns on them, do they?
No, our security officer, but the school resource officer is.
Okay, that's what I, that's, okay. I didn't quite get that in your statement. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Davis, for following.
Thank you, sir.
Agenda items for the next meeting, which will be back to Polo on April the 9th. Just for, I meant to do this at the beginning when everybody was here, but we are going to have a public, what do we, what do we have?
Public hearing at five.
Public hearing at five o'clock. Next, next.
For public input.
That's tonight after this meeting, Bob. Next, next, next meeting at five o'clock.
April the 9th.
April the 9th.
The 9th at five o'clock.
I meant to say that first. Okay, what else, Dr. Broshue?
We will have a student learning report. We will hear a report on the dress code. And we will be revisiting proposed policy BEDB, Board Agenda, and policy BEDH, Public Participation at Meetings. And we will also visit the proposed waiver of policy DFA with investments that we heard from the report about tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other agenda items that the board would like to, for next week, which I think is, I mean, next time, but I think that's full so for the future?
Ms. Chairman, I think at some point the staff is going to bring back a ask for the sequestration impact, federal sequestration impact report and also on the Common Core. I thought we were going to do the Common Core on the 9th, but if it can't be done on the 9th, we can do it at a subsequent board meeting. But those are two issues that I still want to have presented to them. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Others? Hearing none, we'll go to our next item, which is our second participation. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the board or anybody wait? No, come on. State your name and your address or your neighborhood for record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Corr and I live at 7620 Claudia Drive. I just want to take a minute. I was trying to get in contact with somebody in human resources for the last two weeks. I sent messages, I called and also left little sticky notes. I went by the district office. As of today, no one yet has got in contact with me. I'm asking someone tonight, please, could we set a conference? So, I have something to say that's very personal, that happened in personnel. Is it possible that I can set a conference with someone in human resources? Yeah, you know what I was trying to reach you at. Can we get a conference set time tonight? All right, thank you. That's it.
Any other, anybody else? Thank you very much. We now have our board superintendent comments. I'm going to start with Ms. Anderson and go that way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a full night tonight. Thanks for everyone's patience and, I know. I thought all the presentations were wonderful, all the awards. I want, Ms. Super just left and I wanted to commend her on her write-up in the Northeast paper talking about her school, Richland Northeast. It's like if sometimes you have to brag on yourself to get others' attention. And I thought it was a very good write-up. I'm not sure how many people had the opportunity to read it, but it was a very thorough, excellent write-up on Richland Northeast and all the good things that are happening at that school. And also to the high school councils, congratulate all of them. Moll U N, it's Washington won 24 years in a row. That was really neat. And all the Palmetto Gold and Silver awardees, award, award people. Schools is what I'm trying to get at. And also, I really want you guys to know how much I appreciate the calendar in our board brief over the next few weeks. That really makes it easy as a board member in not waiting and getting something in the mail the day before or the day of. So, whoever thought of that, I just want you to know how much I certainly appreciate getting that so I can better plan ahead.
That would be Ms. Council.
Thank you. Because now I can better plan. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a good meeting.
Ms. Patrick? No comments, Ms. Chairman? Ms. Grill?
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, where is she? She left. Thank you for, thank you for your hospitality, and certainly for the presentations, I thought the children were terrific, so you all are doing a wonderful job here. Thank you for having us tonight. Also wanted to congratulate the Model UN, I kind of added up how many years they've been going and how many times they've won, and I think she's hitting at 99% being successful, Dr. Lynn Washington, so we're real proud of the work that she does, and hope we'll have her a little longer. She's 100%?
100%.
Okay.
Never lost.
All right. And the Palmetto Gold and Silver awardees, I think that's great, their accomplishments, academic achievement, and then closing the gap, academic achievement. And I wanted to thank Dr. Vickery and Dr. Hamlin for their presentation tonight, I thought it was excellent. And so appreciate the work that you're doing, and let us know how we can continue to support what you're doing. Thank you.
No comments.
Mr. Manning?
I'd like to congratulate Richland Northeast, their SIC won the Dick and Tonkey Award across the state for SICs, and so we see great things happening at Richland Northeast High School, the Model UN, and many other positives happening there. I'd also like to thank Mr. Jackson for reiterating my request for foreign language in some way or shape. We saw tonight Dr. Hamlin and her program, how important that is to our schools, that we have students of many languages, we are an international society, it's a critical 21st century skill. Cultural awareness is such a key concept for students to be prepared going forward, and it is a big concern of mine that in some way, shape, or form, that we look at that and find out how to bring that back, incorporate it into our schools. I'd also like to thank the committee that brought forward the budget material, thought it was fantastic. I think it's great that we are allowing our district professionals and others to be involved in that process. I would like to specifically mention the component about professional development, that we increase the breadth of some of our professional development opportunities for our teachers and give them other opportunities. I would also really push the district as we move forward with this, because I am a big proponent of professional development, to go on the record to say, though, that we do need to push ourselves and accountability, I think I saw somewhere that we have troubles with the accounting process for that, that we don't have a specific code in our system to track all of our professional development dollars, and that we look at that, and that we also provide a way that we can have our folks that go to professional development demonstrate the value that it brings back into the classrooms, have some way to measure that value as it relates into the classroom. Other than that, I appreciate everybody and the hard work that you do.
Dr. Broschu?
The Richland Northeast High School, International Baccalaureate World School, I should say, was first awarded, the first SIC statewide award back in 2003, and here 10 years later received that again, I think that's a remarkable statistic as well. I will also like to mention that we had Round Top Elementary receive the State Schools of Character Award last week, and they are certainly doing great things there as well. And also, I wanted to mention that we had, of the 18 awards for Gold and Silver Palmetto Awards, it was really terrific to note that we are doing that despite changes in the criteria in how those awards are being given and being met. So it really was, to us this year, very, very profound that we continue to do remarkable work in that area, even though the criteria has changed pretty dramatically. And finally, our Teachers of the Year were honored last week at Spring Valley Country Club, and we want to thank the sponsors that were giving so much of their time, money, and certainly their support for us, and that would be MBCon Construction Management Firm as well as Richland 2 Foundation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Broschu. Checking out some minutes from last, I really don't have anything to say, I just want to ask Mr. Davis, I hate, I want to ask you another question about what I saw about the special ed funds being, the Congress passed that we were in compliance, or let us become in compliance, and does that affect our funding in the special education area?
The legislature had stepped up before and protected us, and this should, that should put us back in the ballgame on the normal footing. That's a good news piece there.
All right, we have, do we have a motion going to the second executive session?
So moved.
We're going to go that, that's going to be good enough as their second.